Good morning and welcome to another work session that we are conducting on the superintendent's proposed FY 2024 operating budget. When we opened the January 24th work session, I said it was our final work session, but during subsequent discussions with the superintendent and administration, we decided to hold one more session to address some outstanding questions and provide additional information. The board is still scheduled to take tentative action on the operating budget at the February 23rd, 2023 Board Business Meeting. As we go through the presentation today, I urge staff to point out pertinent issues that are a concern of the board. As always, board members are free to ask questions at the end of the presentations and request staff to provide information on specific issues. So with that, Dr. McKnight, if you have any opening remarks, we can proceed with the presentation.
Yes, so good morning, everyone, and thank you so much for allowing us to be able to come back and have a follow-up budget work session. Over the last few weeks, it's been very informative. In our last budget work session, we were able to engage, have lots of discussions, hear questions from board members. We've also heard hearings and feedback from our hearings, from our parent community. And so taking all of that into consideration, I think it just elevates the value in our process, which is that we come back and we think about, based on all of the feedback that we've received, what do we need to do? What should we consider in all of that feedback? And we've heard feedback varying from many different spaces in terms of, for some of the new initiatives and projects that we want to put in place. Where will those projects be? Who will get them? How will we utilize the data? How will we engage, involve community in the decision-making of locations and all of those pieces? And so we recognize that that takes time and in our commitment to continuing to build strong communication with our community members. We've taken that into consideration and have just taken all of the data, all of the feedback, and came up with some ways that we would today, one, elevate the focus on math and literacy. Just a couple of weeks ago, we gave a presentation and shared significant data around where our students are, and we want to be responsive to that now that we have that. And we also heard questions from the board of how do we make that come alive and become more apparent in the investment? So we look forward to sharing that today. And we also look forward to sharing some amendments that we would bring forward in consideration of the feedback that we've heard. And so we look forward to sharing that with you from the spaces of how we support schools as well as operations for the district, and we look forward to your feedback, your questions, and moving forward from there. So thank you for the opportunity, and at this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Murphy, who will kick us off.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. McKnight, and good morning. If we could go to the next slide, I'm going to just lead us very quickly through these slides and just remind everyone where we are. I am also reminded that the budget process is a fluid process, so it continues to evolve, ebb, and flow, and I think that's what brings us here this morning. In reviewing the superintendent's recommendations for accelerators, we are going to be focusing this morning on these three critical areas, as Dr. McKnight outlined, literacy and mathematics, recruitment and retention, and my colleague, Mr. Hull, and his team is going to speak to that, as well as safe and inclusive school climate. Next slide, please. We want to establish some terminology. As we've worked through this, we want to use some consistent terminology so folks have a sense, and I know the board has asked questions, as well as community members. So we've outlined some terms that are reflected not only in today's PowerPoint, but hopefully as we move forward, people have an understanding or we're communicating with great clarity as far as what the base budget is, what the superintendent's recommended budget was on FY 24, and then what the adjustments will be moving forward. And that's predominantly what we're going to be speaking about this morning. All right, next slide, please. We've also provided a legend, and we'll continue to integrate that into the presentation as we focus on what those board priorities are, from building safe and inclusive school climate, improving mathematics and literacy, supporting two-way communication, and improving retention and recruitment. And those are really all the same topics we're touching on this morning, so there is very good alignment there. Next slide. Just a reminder also that we are a people business. We serve individuals so that they can be successful and advance through their life to graduation and then contributing to our society. But as being a people business, you can kind of see how our budget is distributed. Ninety percent of that is focused on people, and eighty percent of our operating budget is related to what our main business is, and that is supporting instruction. Next slide, please. So as we look and you listen this morning to some of the adjustments and recommendations that we're bringing forward, we're going to be speaking specifically around increasing instructional time, optimizing attendance as we return from a very historical time in our world, using data and evaluations to make those adjustments, and then also responding, as Dr. McKnight said, to some of the input and discussions we've heard from the board, as well as the stakeholder voices that we've heard through our budget hearings. All right, next slide, please. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Pugh, who's going to lead us through some of the adjustments in relationship to the academic side of the house. And then the second part of this, we'll have Mr. Hull and his team speak to some of the operation pieces. So, Dr. Pugh.
Thank you. Good morning. Our shared commitment is to improving math and literacy rates for all of our students, and you do that by focusing on good first instruction, what happens in the classroom based upon who our students are, what they bring in terms of their assets, and then having a good, solid curriculum, instructional focus, assessments, ability to provide feedback. So what you'll see today that was included in the superintendent's proposed budget and the initial accelerators will be adjustments to those accelerators to help us make an even stronger investment and more clear in the reading and mathematics areas. Next slide, please. So the board's goal for literacy is that 73.9% of our students meet evidence of learning. And the superintendent's budget included, in the current budget, included $16.9 million in ongoing investments to support those things that I spoke of. There are some examples there that you can see of the curriculum purchases and investments that the board has made, and in terms of the centralized supports that's available to help our teachers in the classrooms, as well as the assessments that help them to align their instruction. We've engaged in literacy specifically in a massive shift at the elementary school using the science of reading, that research that says that students need a very structured and, what do I want to say, sequential foundational literacy skills that need to build on one another. So that's a huge shift for what we're doing. So you'll see the really great reading was a significant investment that the board made last year. And also with bringing back DIBELS, that allows us to progress monitor, teachers to have the information so that they can change or adjust instruction based upon what students are saying. So 16.9 million is a significant investment. Next slide, please. You'll also see a similar investment in mathematics. In the math budget right now, supporting professional learning, assessments, curriculum materials, and those people who are supporting that in the schools is an investment of $8.8 million. You'll see that that includes things like the Eureka curriculum, as well as the high school curriculum and the middle school curriculums, and our math content specialists. And again, it's long-term investments in these things that allow people to continue to learn and implement what we're saying works for children. It's not quick. It is a foundational piece that will need to continue year over year in the budget cycle. Next slide, please, and I'll ask Rob to share how we got to these new accelerators that you're about to see.
Yeah, we wanted to throw in some math here for you too, as well. So the purpose, when we realigned the accelerators, we wanted to keep that cost neutral. So you can see that on the bottom line here. The new accelerators represent 89 positions. Currently, the accelerators are 127 positions, so accelerators represent 213 positions in total. And then the offsets you see there, innovative calendar schools tutoring, two-way immersion and technology get us down to that zero, net zero.
Can you say that again, please?
So accelerators right now in the superintendent's recommended budget, there's 127 positions. You can see here we're adding 86 positions net. So with the accelerators, when it's all said and done, we're going to be at 213 positions, and my colleagues will speak to that as we go through. But from a dollar standpoint, we're not adding anything to the 47. So the total superintendent's recommended budget in total stays the same, which is the $235 million increase from last year, 8% increase to get us to the $3.2 billion.
Next slide, please. So the first adjusted accelerator speaks to the conversations that have been happening around the innovative calendar schools. The national research is clear that adding time and being very strategic about continuing instruction in math and literacy will yield results for students. We believe that. We also believe that we need to intentionally take the time to plan and think through what the community desires are, think through what the teachers want, think through what materials are needed, and how we go about communicating that. So with this proposal, the original proposal was to begin two new schools at the beginning of the year. We believe that will take some time for planning to expand in FY '25. So the intention is to take that best practice strategy and expand it in our community, but we also want to have consultant and research-based, as well as stipend in time for teachers to begin planning towards an innovative calendar schools. Next slide, please. Similarly, with the two-way immersion schools, we did receive the CAL report, and it said two-way immersion schools absolutely work. It's an excellent strategy, and it is intended to support students and their families. It helps our students feel valued and heard and bicultural and by literacy as a celebration in an asset-oriented way. We still believe that we should expand those TWI schools, but we heard that we want to do it carefully and with specific attention. So in order to do that and to help us do that, we are proposing in this accelerator to add an academic support and innovation coordinator who can really work with the existing six TWI schools and the existing two innovative calendar schools to make sure that we're implementing the model with fidelity with what we believe and learning from the staff and the community about what's working there and what's not working there, make those adjustments in order to plan thoughtfully for the expansion in FY '25 of both the innovative calendar schools and the TWI schools. So this accelerator actually was reduced now to a single position that will help with both initiatives. Next slide, please. So we're really excited about the additional support, because I think when we started talking about how we better support schools, and we looked at the resources that we have, we, currently in the blue, superintendent's proposed budget is what we have. We have an elementary math supervisor and a secondary math supervisor for a district of 161,000 children. Working with them, we have four currently, four high school, they're secondary, so they're listed there as middle and high, secondary specialists, and we have three elementary specialists. This proposal is going to add individual people, another elementary supervisor, a specific middle school supervisor, two elementary content specialists, and one middle school content specialist. And you'll see why when we talk about the ratios, those numbers were what we came up with. Next slide, please. Currently, our content supervisors, the two that I spoke of, and the content specialists, instructional specialists that they have working with them, in the elementary, the ratio is one specialist per 45 schools. And it's really, really challenging to be at 45 schools. In the secondary, it's one to 17, no less challenging because it's 17 schools, but it's multiple course pathways. So it's higher level maths, and it's courses more so than single courses. So that's the current math support to schools. Next slide, please. To help us really focus and improve in our mathematics outcomes for students, this is our proposal and what it does for the ratios. It breaks it out so that there's an elementary, a middle, and a high school math supervisor, and that each of them have content specialists under them. They also added 12 coaches to help us bring those ratios down. So those instructional coaches would be working in direct support for schools. They would be working with those identified as math leaders in the schools. They would be working with the secondary math coaches or math resource teachers that are in existence in order to help continue to learn best practices, understand the standards, make sure that the pedagogy is matching, and that we're using data in a cyclical way to respond to student needs. What that does is allow us to have a 1 to 10 school ratio for elementary, a 1 to 7 school ratio in middle school where we know we have had significant achievement gaps, as well as high school, it brings that to a 1 to 9 ratio, which we think would be much more impactful for our schools.
Can you restate what the colors mean?
The colors in this slide do not have meaning.
Okay. Colors. But in the two slides ago, when we showed the individual people, blue is what was existing, and orange is what is proposed.
That's what I was trying to figure out.
Yeah, orange. I should have made them orange. Thank you. Next slide, please.
So this is a summary. It's actually 17 total positions dedicated to mathematics. It's the two math supervisors, two elementary instructional specialists, one middle school in words, and 12 coaches centrally assigned to be at the schools with the greatest need. And again, the outcome, we believe it'll lead to increased student outcomes, but it also helped teachers to continue to build their capacity to know the math and to know their students. Next slide, please.
Dr. Pugh, I just wanted to emphasize one part for the board members. As you look at that proposal, one of the questions we always get is, you know, what does the support look like directly to schools? Well, when you see those positions, the intent particularly around the coaches is that their primary responsibility is within the schools. Okay? They get direction from central, look at the data and assess that, but their primary responsibility will be in the schools. And as a matter of fact, as we even think about the supervisor position, now that we're able to decrease the ratio in a more significant way, it's an opportunity for many of our central office staff, even the supervisors, to be able to go out and support those coaches, as well as the schools, to provide that direct observation, feedback, and support also as necessary. So I just wanted to highlight that because that's often a question that comes up.
Just a clarification, by looking at the numbers, they will be in all schools. They're supporting all schools.
Correct. Thank you. Correct, and I mean, it is really important to think about how, well, what this benefits is that we will be able to work specifically with those coaches and instructional specialists to have a singular model, a singular approach, very clear language, very clear timelines and using of assessments, and then they are supporting the school teams in implementing the work and actually coaching, giving feedback, working with them to see how students are doing, and then helping to plan and coordinate what the response to that data would be. Okay, and so another accelerator would be in the English language development. We know that this is our fastest-growing population. It's also one that increases and has increased significantly over the past two years. So in order to support our students who receive language services, this proposal adds two coaches for direct school support and 40 teachers to address our growing enrollment. The coaches, the CAL report, if you had a chance to watch the special populations meeting, really spoke to the fact that additional human resources are needed, and those human resources are needed to be able to continue to do reviewing of schools, scheduling reviews, making sure schools are implementing the appropriate models, and supporting co-teaching, which is a relatively new model, and it takes some effort and time to help work together to embed the academic language in both languages. It also helps to create accountability feedbacks. It gives us a better sense of what's happening in the schools. Next slide, please. So an accelerator that'll support both literacy and math is something that we've termed academic opportunity specialists, and this is really responding to our recent data that was shared publicly in that our black and brown student performance is not where we need it to be. And this accelerator would really build on some of the structures that you have in place. Currently, we have equal opportunity schools at the high school level where we have teams of people really working with students to hear student voice, working with teachers to help encourage students to take more advanced courses, and really remove barriers of students, either access to information or perceptual or real barriers to taking more rigorous courses. So what this does is build out sort of in a pyramid, so a high school generally has two feeder schools. So it's identifying four high schools who have equal opportunity schools, and we'll use the data to do that, and then supporting their feeder middle schools much earlier. So imagine in sixth grade that we have a person whose sole job is to help do academic planning for our targeted students, to really work with them, work with our families, to work with our teachers, to see how we can best support students in their needs academically, well-being, and really someone to be a cheerleader and a champion to help our students as they engage throughout the school.
Dr. Pugh?
Yes.
Again, wanted to add some more context to this. So in our high schools, we've had our equal opportunity specialists that actually support students, and one of their primary roles is to be able to look at students who are in danger of graduation, students who need those additional supports. When we step back and look at some of our most recent data, we recognize, and you can see this historically over time, some of the gaps that we continue to talk about closing in achievement. Yes, we end up having to address them differently when they get to high school, but you actually see the gaps existing more widely when students transition to secondary. So the goal is to be able to back that support up. So when we think about this academic opportunity specialist, you know, that's someone knowing who these vulnerable groups of students are that are in middle school so that that support can start to take place, and most importantly, they are able to start that articulation with the high school folks that are already there so that that support can extend from middle to high. So the goal is that then by the time we get to high school, and this is really important when we think about the requirement of the blueprint and how we're going to be measured on graduation readiness by the end of 10th grade, that means that we have to back the system of support up so that our students can then be more prepared earlier, more earlier than we've ever looked at their readiness in the past. So I wanted you to get a sense of that articulation of this support for students in middle school and how it should marry very nicely with the support that already exists within high school. So hopefully our middle school staff and principals out there cheering and celebrating right now as they see this, because, I mean, if you've ever spent any time in middle school, you know that they are already vulnerable because of where they are developmentally. But for us to have staff members who are focused specifically on who those students are and supporting the leadership team of the school as well as the staff and the students and families directly, that is a direct support to black and brown students in some instances, farm students, whoever needs that direct attention. And so when we look at our data, we should see progress for those students, because this is someone who is there with their primary responsibility to monitor that and to keep that on the forefront of looking at the overall school data and having those conversations with the leadership teams and teachers.
Yeah.
Does Yank have a clarifying?
Yes. The four high school you mentioned, can we have the names?
They haven't been identified publicly yet. We've looked at the data. We have We've looked at the data, we have some ideas where it would be. But we also want to involve the Office of School Support and Well-Being because sometimes when we're looking at data, we're looking at it just based on student data or achievement data that makes sense. And some schools already have multiple programs that are occurring in there. So we want to be sensitive to and take a whole look at the schools before really identifying a school. We also want the school to understand what the purpose is, how they should be used, what the expectations are, and agree to that. Next slide, please. So we're really excited about this idea of proposing a summer institute. We know that learning and getting excited about what it is that you do when you're a teacher is the key, right? And so putting together some of the things that we know our teachers need support in, in an optional summer institute, this would be a four-day summer institute, and it would focus on not only the grade level standards because that is needed, some people need more than others, but making sure that we understand what those grade level standards are and the content, but also working with our specific populations and in response to our anti-racist audit, what practices need to be embedded in when you're planning for students. It also will include some opportunities for social and emotional learning because really, this is our opportunity to put it together as not separate streams of information, separate ways of working with children, but really, how does a single classroom teacher who has 25, 26 students in their class plan using all that we know about what works for each individual student? We also, in this accelerator, put in funding for facilitators because we believe we have some teachers who do this skillfully. And this would be a great opportunity to highlight what they do. Additionally, a stipend for those who are attending. And we also would like to bring in some keynote speakers because it's one thing to hear Peggy Pugh and Nikki Hazel say that it's a good thing and the research says to do it, but when you're reinforced by those people who are listed as experts in the field and our teachers know and follow them, it helps to affirm the practices that they're doing. So this would be a summer institute that we'd be beginning planning for and making sure that it's exciting and fun, and it gets people excited about getting ready to come back to school and that they feel prepared when they come in.
I have a quick question for you. Why optional?
One of the things that we'll have to do is work with our associations when it comes down to required trainings for staff. So that's one of the biggest factors. I mean, we ultimately may determine that some of these we've come to agreement with that may be required based on how students are doing, but that's something that we would have to work through a process on.
Okay, yeah, I guess I was thinking, not necessarily required, but heavily encouraged as opposed to optional.
We're going to heavily encourage, actually, all of these. And to be very honest, I would say that I would anticipate that these would be highly popular with enrollment for our staff only because these have been areas that they've been requesting and to get more support and information around. So at this point, this is an opportunity for us to deliver what the request has been.
I have a question. Is this a one-time event or you're going to be holding several sessions so that there are options for their teachers?
So I want to go back to Ms. Madraszky's question first and say, we are actually starting this. So this is the beginning process where as we move forward in the future years, we'll further develop and carve this out. So we want to give folks time and have a little bit of flexibility within the system. But we're really building this into what our expectations will be for the future, not only this summer, but also moving forward. To answer Ms. Wolf's question, yes, we are going to have a flexible schedule recognizing the timeline between now and when these begin to roll. So we'll have options for people that fit their schedule as we go forward.
Thank you, because I was thinking we're getting pretty close to the summer and people have already made their plans. So I wanted you to have options.
Yeah, absolutely.
So one of the things, having done similar events like this that we found is that people came on the first day and then attendance like doubled on the second day because they found it valuable and they went back and used word of mouth. We really want people who are excited and want to be there. And we think if we make it worthwhile and that it's relevant to what they're doing and they leave with good skills and feeling good about their readiness, that it will sell itself, so. Next slide, please. So we brought forward the expansion of the Middle Years Program the last we spoke, but some clarity about why. We expanded in 2019 to two additional regional sites, and those sites only have grades 11 and 12 IB diploma programs, and they don't have the feeder program in the Middle Years Program that is six through 10. What we found is actually when a student has the benefit of that entire pathway, that they complete at a much higher rate in the diploma program than if they only have the two-year program. So our intent with this accelerator is to expand that and to make sure that that is done carefully with fidelity because there's a lot of work that goes into becoming an IB school. It would be about making sure that you're a candidate school, that you fill out your application, that there's sufficient training, that it's a whole school model at the middle school level so every student benefits from very intense professional learning that will benefit the students. We have added and accelerated and enriched instruction specialists to support that expansion specifically. That office, small office, has many, many programs to support. So while we agree that this expanding Middle Years Program is a wise investment for our students and for our schools, we also know that we need to support it so that the schools have direct communication and direct support with all that goes into becoming a Middle Years Program school. Next slide, please. We also recognize that there are students at the high school, at the secondary level, middle school and high school, who do have significant gaps in their reading achievement. The data tell us that's clear. And so we have two things included in this secondary literacy support. One is that based on the blueprint, students who are not identified as college and career-ready by the end of 10th grade are required to go into what is called a support pathway, which includes reassessment. We haven't done that in years, right? And we really do not want our students to be denied access to other programs. We really want to prepare them so that they can meet that requirement, that graduation requirement. But we also have to prepare for students who do not meet that threshold. And so one of the requirements of the blueprint is that we create what are called support pathways. I think you heard Dr. Floyd speak of this early on in the year, and she shared that it's a course that actually has to be planned and collaborated with Montgomery College. They have to have input on it, we have to agree on what it is, and then students take that and reassess. So what this does is build in some additional stipends to help us build those courses, pay teachers to help us write those courses collaboratively. We also have, we have secondary reading interventions. We have, I think there's 10, and they're research-based, they're evidence-based. But right now, we really have an opportunity to build on those things that were started under some of the ESSR funding that surrounding districts were able to pilot and try some of these new interventions that do not put a student away from their peers for 90 minutes doing something that they already don't feel good about. We think that it would be wise of the system to issue an RFP to see what have other districts used that they're seeing success with, and what is something that we can do for our older readers who are not meeting with the achievement that they have. So the bulk of the money that is there is to issue an RFP for secondary literacy interventions. Next slide, please. This accelerator was in the original acceleration. We just elevated here because we also think it continues to be important as a requirement of the blueprint to be able to fund AP and IB exams that we build it into the operating budget. We also believe that by removing the barrier for students who may be in the course and may be taking the class but who are not paying for the exam at the end, that this will encourage students to actually enroll, but then to also be able to take advantage of what an AP exam can offer you for actually reducing college expenses. Next slide, please. And with that, Nikki will take all the questions. That's the final slide of the academic accelerators. So you've asked along, so if not, we can go.
I'm sure we have questions. So I'm going to ask our board members to ask one question so that we can hear from the entire board. And of course, we will circle back around. Ms. Harris is on Zoom, so I just wanted to acknowledge her. And I will give her the opportunity to get off Zoom and ask the first question. Go ahead.
Thank you, good morning, everybody. Yeah, thank you for all of this. I really do appreciate the work that's happened here to take all the feedback that's been coming in, take two steps backwards, sort of really double down on ensuring we're creating the kind of atmosphere in our schools that will allow our students to succeed academically and provide them the supports that they need in a very thoughtful and intentional way. My first question, I think, and I'm not exactly sure how to ask it. Looking at sort of the totality of what we're doing here around instruction in the two key areas, literacy and math at all levels. And I think it gets to the primary overarching presumption or premise that we need more instructional time for students to kind of emerge from the impacts of the pandemic academically. I think is true. I'm wondering how the work here will also support the needs we're seeing for people to still recover from the trauma and the anxiety and the stress that they've experienced over the past now three years. Because I think we're still seeing the kind of incidents and disruptions in classrooms and in schools that represent a whole population of students who missed out on typical social development for a couple of years during a critical, you know, neurological developmental and social developmental time. So, you know, the fourth graders are still acting like second graders, and the ninth graders are still acting like seventh graders. And we're still not, I think, managing that well. And so great, you know, great instructional development in the classroom is good, but how, if the classroom is still disrupted, if students still haven't processed their trauma enough to sit in that classroom and really benefit from the better instructional practices and the enhanced resources, are we going to see the results that we need?
Ms. Harris?
Yeah.
So we have our curriculum people and our budget people, and you're asking an excellent question. But I don't know that they are prepared to answer it in a budget work session. So maybe we can just put a pin on it, and then maybe at the end, if anyone is in the audience is available to think about it because it is a very complex question, an important question, we can come back to that. Did you want to ask a question of the curriculum and budget people?
Well, I guess I did have a question, just a clarifying one. We were talking about the expansion of the Middle Years Program to do two additional middle and two additional high schools. Where are those programs now?
So the question was details on where the Middle Years Programs are now and how current size of our Middle Years Programs and where are they? If, we're looking to see if we have anybody in the audience that has that information, Ms. Harris, and we do, great.
Hi, Jennifer Scovola, I'm the AP IB Coordinator in the Office of Accelerated and Enriched Instruction. And this is my first time at the table.
Welcome. You have the answer.
And I hope, no, I have the answer, yes. So we have eight high schools that have IB programs, that have the diploma program. Three of the high schools also have the career program. Want to do this by memory. Six of those high schools have the Middle Years Program for ninth and 10th grade. So six of our high schools have ninth through 12th grade, the continuum from Middle Years Program to the diploma program. 10 of our middle schools have the Middle Years Program. So we have 16 NYPD programs within the whole school. Okay. And then we have one primary years program at College Gardens. So two of our high schools, Albert Einstein and Rockville High School, do not have the Middle Years Program. Then we also have Richard Montgomery, which is the countywide magnet. And then we have three regional magnets, which is Watkins Mill. They also have open access to all their students, and they have ninth through 12th NYPD, diploma, and career. If I'm going too fast, just let me know. Springbrook has, is the other, another regional, and they have Middle Years, so they have ninth through 12th. And they have NYPD and the diploma. And then Kennedy High School is our third regional, and they have, they just got authorized last spring for the NYPD. And so they have ninth through 12th NYPD and then the diploma.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Harris?
Yes, and, yes, and will we be getting sort of some overview data on how those overall access, I guess, access uptake? How many students are participating and how they're doing?
Yep, we can do that.
Thank you. Going to go over here to my left and see if Mr. Kim has any questions.
While you're here, I'll go with an AP and IB question, and maybe this isn't something you can speak to. But so I'm just curious how that $3.4 million number came out for the AP and IB exams. So is the intention to remove the cost for all students? Or just until we hit 3.4 million, is that an estimate? So I just want a little clarity there.
So that is based on the number of students that have taken exams last year and then an estimate on how many students will take the exam for the next year. And we've kind of put it out for the next couple of years. So based on the enrollments and how many students actually took the exams last year in the 21, 22 school year, that's where the numbers came from.
Thank you. So this accelerator, you know, as it's placed in the current proposed operating budget, the intention is to remove the cost for all students, period, though, correct? Thank you.
And it is a blueprint requirement. And we also have to keep in mind that dual enrollment is growing by leaps and bounds. So at first, I thought, oh, we got to get to all the students. But actually, no, a lot of students are choosing dual enrollment, which is a different path that will not require this test fee.
Of course, more kids may end up taking the test if they don't have to pay for it, too, so.
Sure, yep. Mrs. Madraszky, question?
Yeah, I just have a question about the RFP to purchase additional high-quality effective. If we, you said the bulk of the $2 million is going towards that, and...
Which one, Ms. Madraszky?
Twenty-one. And I'm curious as to, like, why we can't just contact other districts that are doing these things that you mentioned well and ask them what they're doing and why we need to spend $2 million on that.
Sure, thank you. So we have asked and do know what some other districts are using, but in terms of a fair purchase process, issuing an RFP to elicit or seek is the process that we're expected to use because of the scale, because there's so many schools that we would have to cover. It wouldn't just be that this has been effective at this school and we could go out and purchase that resource or that intervention.
So this actually incorporates the cost of materials?
Correct.
Not just an RFP for somebody to call counties and say what's working?
Correct, absolutely, oh, no. And to your point, I mean, there are, so where we are in ESSR, we're in year three, I guess, of having that funding. So schools just got last year's data now. So there's preliminary data that shows some things that work, particularly at the secondary level. And the state did some targeted grants that other people have done. I just think it's a good opportunity. We know we have students who are struggling, readers at the secondary level, and we know what we have been doing, and we're not seeing the growth that we would like to see, more than a year's growth in a year in any of them. So I don't know if you have anything to add?
Yeah, so we'll take care of developing the RFP and putting it out. So that's not where the cost is. It is in purchasing the product, materials, training. And most of the interventions we have support are elementary and middle schools. We don't have strong interventions in high school, particularly literacy. So that's where we want to focus this.
Okay, great. Dr. Murphy, did you want to add to that?
I want to come back to Mr. Kim's question for just a second, and I want to editorialize a little bit here as a former principal. We are at a critical point in time right now and speaking in relationship to how we're beginning to plan for next school year. So students are signing up for courses right now. One of the advantages that we speak to about the AP IB dual enrollment CTE is we're removing barriers. But there also needs to be a conversation. But there also needs to be a conversation that's going on. And I want to encourage that, that's happening at the school with our school folks, our teachers, our administrators, but also begin to encourage that conversation to go on at home. And one of the advocacy's I know that Dr. McKnight has and we all have is we want students to stretch themselves a little bit. In other words, something that we're good in, if we're good in science, math, whatever that be, stretch yourselves and look for other academic opportunities. By the way, all students are good in something and like all of us. So, there's got to be those opportunities. And I think the, some of the barriers that have been removed are an advantage to that. But also, there needs to be conversations. And as I like to say, using the ocean analogy, the wave is coming. We need to catch that wave right now because we're setting, kind of setting the format for what the future's going to look like. So, I think the board, in any way that we can, you know, elevate that conversation, I think is good and reminding families as well as we're reinforcing that same message with our principals and our teachers at our schools. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. Mrs. Evans?
Yes, you know, so I actually don't have a question. I want to say I am so impressed that we were able to make all these adjustments with no money added. And I was sitting here like shaking because this is really good. I mean, you took what the board said, what the community said, particularly around math and literacy. And so, in just a short period of time, we had our last meeting last week, right? So, I am excited just to hear what's going to happen at the schools, right? With the coaches, the ratios, we did a great job of just really laying it out and showing a good picture of what it could look like and what it means for our students and for our staff. So, I appreciate it and understand the AP IB. I have a former student that went through the diploma program. IB at John F. Kennedy High School where there wasn't the middle years program. And then I have a current high school student who has the ability to go through it and there's the middle year program there. So, I'm just excited to see all the work that we're doing and how we're just continuing to have a student-centered focus, right? So, no, this is, yeah, yeah, this is really good. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I will ask a clarifying question about Slide 19 around the Summer Institute. Could you expand a little bit further about the English learners? What types, because that's, there's so much that needs to be done in that area. What kinds of training are you thinking of focusing on there?
So, I'll start and then kick it over to Nikki if she has additional. But really, our intention there and what we hear is our general ed teachers need to know some basic strategies about how to use academic language bilangual, or, you know, using it in both languages, making sure that the students are understanding the concepts and that language isn't the barrier. We've also seen that co-teaching where you have someone who is supporting that planning and supporting that use of the home language, the native language, is providing support for students, right? They have someone there that they can ask questions of in their native language who can help plan what that academic language looks like in the class. So, for me, it would be very basic how you welcome a student whose language is not English into a classroom, how you respectfully understand the cultural differences and also intentionally plan to provide assistance throughout the classroom, depending on what grade levels you are in terms of pictures, in terms of signage, in terms of multiple languages. So, basics, so that every teacher, because most of our teachers have a student whose language is, first language is not English in their class. So, really helping shore up and build their confidence that they are prepared to do so.
Yes, and I'll just add, a big component of the work that we're doing is around planning. And when we can have our teachers, our language development teachers, planning with our content teachers and focused on language objectives. So, that if every content teacher can be very clear about the language that they want to elevate in the classroom as they're teaching the content, whether the ELD teacher is in the classroom or not, that is one way that we can really make sure that everybody is focused on the needs of our language learners. And then, if we have them partnering together to do the co-teaching, then they can really focus again on what's the content we need to teach? What's the language, what are the language skills that need to be taught? And how do we do it together? So, all of that will be included in the summer training.
Thank you. I know that teachers have told us over the years, content area teachers in the secondary, we need more training because ESOL students are everyone's students, not just ESOL teacher students. And if I'm a social studies teacher in 10th grade or in 9th grade or science, I need the skills, the know-how, the scaffolding to know, the techniques to know how to scaffold my instructions so that it can be accessed depending on the language level of the student. So, I'm very pleased to hear that you will be addressing that. There's a huge need. We have a lot of content area teachers in our high schools that need this training. And again, the philosophy of ESOL students are everyone's students and we all have to be prepared and trained, just like special education. They're all our students, not just special education department or teachers. We all have to be prepared and equipped to be able to meet their needs in the classroom. So, thank you for that. Ms. Wolf, Mrs. Wolf?
Good morning. I want to thank you for the responsiveness you've shown to the board's concern. I'm very impressed that you were able to come up with some strategic adjustments that, for me, really make a lot of sense. So, I don't have any questions. I do have a comment. Following up on Ms. Yang's question about which eight middle schools will get the academic opportunity specialist? You know, I'm always concerned that, and I'm talking to you, Dr. Pewer, you said the schools should agree to participate. I'm always concerned that we only take the schools that are willing to do it because therefore you could end up with an imbalance around the county of opportunities. So, I would really like to see us come up with a model that sort of pushes people in all parts of the county to participate because generally, we don't see a lot of the participation coming from our side of the county. And I know that it has to do with the number of issues they're already dealing with. I certainly understand that. But I do think if you are looking to improve academic planning, a lot of that strategy needs to go to certain targeted schools that have the problem set, they don't feel like they can take on something else. I understand that. But I think if we can give them the support from central office, they can do that. So, it's just a thought, something to think about. Thank you.
Ms. Grace, for go to oven?
I just want to say, as a former ESOL student, thank you so much for the thought that you put into it and recognizing the great need. And I just want to echo what President Sylvester said, that they're all, everyone's students. And I think that paradigm needs to change and I can see that being done here. And I hope it just continues and builds on it. And then, wanted to follow up on Mrs. Wolf's comment that, you know, opportunity specialists really should be in places where they're having issues. And when you, and I understand the politics and so on, but I think we need to be very deliberate about putting them in places that are truly struggling in order to be able, because it's just easy to go to a place where it's not struggling and then every, you know, and everybody's hunky-dory, you know, okay, we're doing great. But to really be deliberate about schools that are really having issues with that and making sure that, we don't impose it, but very highly recommend it from the high, high up. And can you also on the, for the professional conference, just give me an idea of why were you thinking on the anti-racist practices? Like, what were you thinking was going to be presented? Like, kind of what you did for the ESOL students, just curious. But again, I just want to thank you and everybody else for listening to us and for listening to the community.
Thank you. So, I'll do the first question of, or comment, the opportunity specialist. So, this is actually a strategy that I've seen used before and probably my way of coming about it was that it was tentative. And we assigned, I've previously had a person who was assigned to the middle and high school. And because they were welcomed and part of the team and planning in the middle school, they ended up primarily spending their time in the middle school. So, it's not that they are not wanted. It's that we actually have to, we can be very persuasive with the data about where we start this. And this is actually to try to specifically and strategically address some of the things you're speaking of. If you look at, I'll turn on my special ed hat. This, the CCES grant is specifically targeted to reducing disproportionality in discipline and in placement in special education. So, there, by looking at the data and really helping schools analyze who's getting what consequences and when, you know, those things that actually turn students off from learning, those things that make it not a welcoming place. Those are barriers that need to be removed that I would imagine this person would be really, really looking at those data as well. So, again, I hear, we will be very careful about using the data and put it where the need is and intentional about how we sell it and support it to our schools. Second question about the anti-racist practices. We have been doing so much work in unpacking the audit and then going through a process of analyzing the data, comparing and looking at the data from the student voice and then from the academic lens and drawing parallels, not necessarily causality yet, and then trying to do some, I think they're called fail-safe, safe-to-fail experience, experiments in each group, trying to do small things that we know can make a difference. Because if we're all doing small things that we know can make a difference, then we believe that we will make progress in this area. So, I would anticipate what is done and what is offered in that. It's not packaged, it's not created, that's an umbrella term, because I know it needs to be foundational in all that we need to do. For me, I would love to see it embedded in when you're going to a math class, the anti-racist practices are elevated in that class. I don't know that we're quite there yet, but I know that there will be, there is significant work being done around that right now in all offices and all schools. So, I hope that some of the things that we learn, we can put forward in sharing best practices with others.
Thank you. Ms. Yang?
Yes, good morning. I am excited about several of these accelerators, especially in the area of math, literacy and ELD. Okay, so I appreciate this process of us listening to the community and having dialogue, work sessions between the board and the staff. I have a comment and actually a clarifying question first. First is, you mentioned the goal for literacy is 73%. What's the goal for math for us?
This is from the strategic plan.
Yeah.
It is, yes.
Yeah.
So, 72.7.
72.7, okay. So, last year, so my comment is thinking about the return of our investment and thinking how we going to do this. So, last year, we put in reading specialist. And this year, in this proposed budget, we have math content specialist and all these things laid out. So, when we are putting in this investment, are we also at the same time thinking about evaluation? How often are we going to see, evaluate the effectiveness of these investments? What results are these investments yielding us? Just want to ask if that's in our thinking and planning?
Sure, it's almost like, and I don't know if you're familiar with Guskey's research about the five levels of professional development, right? The first one is perception and how valuable experience was. The second one is, I did walk away with something. But the bottom level is that they change practice, right? That practice is informed by what professional development occurred. So, if you look at it, the direct correlation between where there's a coach and whether or not students achieve, there's so many variables between that. But I agree with you. I do think that it's something to continue to look at and continue to improve. What I will say is it's a long-term strategy. It's a long-term investment. It's not because I have a coach immediately, I've learned how to implement things best in the practice or best in the classroom that's measurable tomorrow. We hope that it does result in that. But the reality is it's a long-term investment to be able to continue the professional learning. How can we measure it? We can absolutely identify the schools that where you have coaches and the ability to correlate that or won't be a relationship. It would be to be able to say, is there a relationship between how students improved, what their performance was and who was in the, whether or not they had a coach?
Just to, are you planning to do that?
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Murphy?
So, one of the expectations that's been communicated to me by the superintendent is first fold, with any new initiative, accelerators, et cetera, there needs to be an evaluation design around all of them with some type of monitoring put in place. Coupled with that, we have several programs, initiatives that have already, you know, been implemented over years. We're looking very closely at those. Not only do we want to see results and outcomes, but we also have a fiscal responsibility. And my colleague, Mr. Hull, and I have also been evaluating how we're using our resources. And in a time when resources are tight, we need to be responsible. And we also need to make sure that those decisions we're making are reaping the outcomes that we want to see and benefiting students. So, a short answer to your question is yes. Coupled with a longer term is that everything we're going to be doing is not only going to be monitored, but it's going to be evaluated and we're going to be looking very closely at outcomes.
That is music to our ears.
Yes, yes, yes.
That response.
When we talk about evaluation, we have system-wide evaluation. We have school-wide evaluation and we have individual evaluation. I would like to see that all levels of evaluation reflect our priorities, reflect our investment in the process. Thank you.
Okay, board members, I'm going to go back around. If you have any additional questions, just want to do a time check. We're at 11 o'clock and we still have the second half of our presentation around fully staffing our schools, recruitment and retention. Ms. Harris?
Yeah, thank you. I'm very interested in the Summer Institute plan and just wondering how this division here is, I mean, as a former teacher, I took, you know, professional development in the summer. There was a whole panoply of courses that are offered through our, you know, virtually and in person for teachers to take advantage of. But what, how, what's the vision here that's different? More concentrated, more specialized, deeper? How is that different from the range of professional development opportunities we provide for our staff currently?
So, visioning it out, it still needs to occur with what makes sense, with where we are with the March 1 memo and what is already being offered because we don't want to be duplicative. I think in the vision that I have is based on the fact that we know our teachers need a level setting, basically, and that this would be an opportunity to come together in a consolidated way for four straight days of learning, learning application, learning application, learning reflection and walking away with materials that they can use right away. So, it's rather than individuals taking random courses with a variety of other people, it's more of, the vision is more of a conference style. Still that you have choice, still that you have different pathways for an elementary teacher or pathways for a middle school teacher and choices that you can make within each of those areas, if that makes.
So, is part of this then the creation almost of cohorts of people that would then also continue throughout the year with PLCs and things like that to continue that deep dive and that starts with that really concentrated series of days?
Right, and I mean, it absolutely needs to be continued. And we hope to be able to continue it through our own leader learning with directors, with principals, as we're doing our walkthroughs and feedback cycles that we're seeing the practices and that we're responding to what teachers are saying they need in terms of more learning. It's usually, some of the ways to evaluate or to actually show improvement is to have an artifact from that learning, that you've implemented something and it produced something to then analyze and say, okay, would I do this differently? Or how do I respond now that the students are showing me that they know X, Y, and Z? So, yes, the plan would be to have an excellent kickoff, deep foundational and fun and inspiring learning and then follow-ups throughout the year.
And what do you think would be the capacity? And what do you think would be the capacity, the number of people that could be served during that four-day summer institute?
So the formula that we used was 3,000 people for four days, for six-hour days.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. McKnight?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Vestry. I wanted to circle back to your earlier question to Ms. Harris. On Tuesday, we did a full presentation around the whole focus of wellbeing and emotional support for students in terms of what your question was. We specifically, from a broad perspective, talked about who we saw as students, who we needed to zone in and providing support for, for what were some of the supports that we put in place and how those supports were being accessed by different groups of students. So I just wanted to refer back to that. And then also to say, I couldn't find you, Ms. Malley, he switched sides on me. But Mr. Monteleone is here. If there is a specific question that you had that, that would reinforce some of what they shared the other day. And then I also know in our operations part of the budget, there are going to be some investments that we have there that are really around supporting some of those staff areas that we know really support social emotional support for our students.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. And I'm not sure, I, I mean, I think my question is sort of bigger, more operationalizing the day-to-day in the schools and how we are prepared to both anticipate the kinds of, you know, still processing of trauma that we're going to be seeing and adapt in real time so that students don't go out and just wander the halls, don't act out in a classroom, but are engaged in, in really finding that value in the classroom that, that can kind of help them process and take advantage of their academic opportunities more effectively.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Mr. Kim?
Thank you. Yeah, I was also interested to hear about the, the summer institute, specifically those pieces about the anti-racist practices and the PD around that. And my initial thoughts is that there's kind of a tension there, maybe, that because it's an optional training, you know, it's either, because it's an optional training, there's, you know, it's a part of a very necessary professional development around anti-racism that only some teachers receive, or it's just kind of a redundancy of, of other trainings around anti-racism that all teachers receive through other channels. So, you know, it, it's great to hear that, that there's a lot of efforts around this and of course, it's necessary, but you know, I, you know, it, it just is, of course, really important that, you know, it's effective and efficient and meaningful and impactful for teachers. So I, I just wanted to raise that consideration and ensure that, you know, that's certainly a, a thought as this is something that is being developed. So I wanted to raise that and then I just wanted to make sure I correctly understood one thing from earlier. So in the adjusted proposal, the intention for the TWI and the innovative schools is to open in the 2024, 2025 school year with the adjusted proposal? Okay, great. Thank you.
Can you say that again with your microphone?
Yes, fiscal year '25. They, they will also need to be in the budget for that to be able to support the staffing and all of that, but this gets us started on creating that plan.
Mrs. Madraski? Mrs. Evans?
So I was, I was thinking back to hearing my colleagues ask the question about some of the, the work that we're talking about doing being optional for schools. So I, my question was, so the last ANS meeting was on January 31st and you asked all the administrators to bring their data to kind of look at. Is that, so in, in that moment, people have an opportunity to be vulnerable with their peers and just kind of really take a deep dive into the information. Is that a way for us to get to more schools buying in to doing some of this work and not having a feeling of a, of being targeted or feeling as though they're being called out? You know what I mean? Is this a way to make it a little bit easier for, for, for schools to buy in to what we're talking about and trying to be more focused on doing the work and better?
Yes, I would agree with that wholeheartedly. One of the first steps of us adjusting ourselves around the data is to bring an awareness to what is happening in your schools. After two years and a quarter of managing operationally from a COVID-19 perspective, you know, looking at student learning and how to be astute to that and what the needs are, really did not take the front seat. The front seat was how do we keep everybody safe and keep our students in school? Now that we are back in better, normal conditions, for schools to be able to have vulnerability around, let's have these conversations. And it's at a time where we all know that learning's been impacted because of the circumstances over the last couple of years. So let's talk about where we are right now. The purpose of doing that, and as you said, Ms. Evans, at ANS is so that there's a PLC. That's where principals, assistant principals, central service staff are able to come together to say, what does our data really tell us? And what does it say about who we're serving and how we need to serve students better, differently, in a more supportive way? And then what do we need to do with the staff? So that is the first step in that conversation. And the goal, and as I shared on that day, was to look at that data together at ANS, but then to go and continue to have that conversation in the schools with the staff, the staff development teacher, the leadership team, the teachers, the PLCs, to say, okay, here is where we are. Then putting all these supports in place allows us to be able to hear from our schools, you know, what it is that they need and what we see that they need to help support them, address that. But that definitely is, I would say, a, a, a setting of an expectation right there that it is the data that has to drive us into Ms. Wolf's question earlier. That's why this always has to be a two-way street. What do we see that gets our attention, that makes us say the support may be needed? How do we go to that school to better understand what that support needs? And there, say, what is this relationship going to look like? Because we both see something that we need to work on together here collectively.
Yeah, because Ms. Wolf raised a really good point and a question that every board member has had and has asked over the years. And I'm, I'm trying to come to ANS more so that I can be better educated and hear what's happening on the ground for myself when people in the community come to me and ask me questions that, of course, I always direct them to the staff that has their expertise, but I like to know myself. So just in that moment, I thought about, like, I didn't stay for the workshops, of course, I don't need to, but just be in there to hear that. And I saw people had their computers and like really pulling it out. It made me think about, you know, the more we do that, the more comfort there will be in taking that step and to, to better support our students and then us not questioning whether or not the schools that should be raising their hand are doing that. So, okay, that's all.
Can I, along those lines as well, new hires? I, I appreciated what you said about you can't require without working through the associations and all that. Will we be strongly encouraging new hires to participate in the summer conference academy? I think it just could be a really good opportunity.
I would say a couple of things. It depends on the timing of the new hire and whether or not they can participate. It's also, we're, we're going to do like pre-registration so that they're ready. But a lot of the details of, of what we're saying, this, this conference, to get people started off on a positive way next year, will not in any way replace the anti-racism work that we're doing in response to the audit. And it really, I don't envision it as a place to do the deep work that continues to be needed. So optional is, what does it look like in a classroom to create a welcoming environment to honor variety of cultures on a practical level? You know, what are some examples of what teachers are doing and they're finding some success with? Sort of elevating some of the, some of the good practices rather than a sequence of learning. And Marjorie Lo Moutasos is probably, you know, has lots of questions. So we need to be locked up and, and coordinating because there is an equitable teaching and learning framework that's being developed. So that's, could be a first attempt to actually, what does that look like visibly for teachers to be able to say, I have equitable teaching and learning practices?
Thank you.
Just a reminder that we do have new educator orientation, which covers a lot of these topics.
Thank you, Ms. Hazel. I was going to mention that. They will actually take these priorities and make sure that's there because it's a part of the onboarding, which helps bring that, that level of consistency to all of our new hires. And then there's one more way to think about this, I'll say, is while we have these teachers who may be a quarter of all of our teachers coming to these summer trainings, the purpose is that they go back to their PLCs and the staff development teachers, you know, having them coordinated so that that training then becomes available to all of the other staff, whether they attended the direct training or not, because some, one within their PLC or their staff development teacher would have been a part of this and can help permeate that learning throughout that team.
Ms. Wolf?
I have a question and you may not be able to answer it today. That's okay, but as, as chair of strategic planning, I would be looking for an answer. And that is that you list environmental factors, optimizing attendance. Now, we know that we have attendance issues from the data walk. Maybe you could refresh my memory. I don't recall what we're doing about that because these accelerators are excellent, but the, the kids have to come to school. So can somebody help me out with that?
We actually, our office works very closely with school support and wellbeing. Mr. Monteleone, I don't know if you want to speak to it. His office works with us and in schools to identify those particular students to develop a plan. You want to come forward? All right.
Yeah, in thinking about the environmental factors, a lot of people also conceptualize it as we had a year of virtual and then that was over. The reality is, that second year, we had attendance issues with students, families, teachers, people covering. It was not a normal year for us to expect kinds of results. So even now, people are covering classes. I'm sure we're hearing about it, right? When there are absences and teachers are pulled to, to cover classes or you're covering other classes, and then student absences as well, as students are cycling through getting sick. So it's, it's still impacting us, I would say, to some degree. And the...
So the question is, what are we doing about attendance?
Students, yes.
What, what are our plans? I mean, you may not be prepared to talk about it today. And it could come to the strategic planning committee, but I just wanted you to be thinking about it because you do list it as a factor that applies to these accelerators.
Yeah, thank you. I'll just give you an overview. So historically, you know, we had policies, right, in place maybe a decade ago that were punitive and that where the student's attendance was tied to grades. We moved away from that. And so we've seen challenges specifically coming out of the pandemic across the nation. And what is happening right now is Steve Neff, Director of Pupil Personnel Services, has a cross-office work group, including principals, PPWs, counselors, teachers together, and they are at this moment working on a proposal to bring forward. And it is always going to be tied to some of the grading, reporting policies that we have. And the challenge is this, I'm just going to lay the challenge out in very frank terms. The challenge is that we're in a place where some of our students' perceptions of, of the value of education has shifted and people are, students are questioning the value of what they're being asked to come to school to do. And we have an opportunity to transform what that learning experience looks like, to draw them in. But on the back end of this, we have to figure out a way to have accountability for attendance without it being tied to grades and without it being punitive. And so that is the, that is the window that we are trying to, to step through at this time. But we anticipate coming forward and surfacing up some proposals in our best thinking over the next couple of months. So we have a team together on it right now.
Thank you. I look forward to the report.
Excellent topic for our strategic planning committee, as well as the program evaluation, monitoring of math and literacy. Ms. Fergie Aben? No questions? Ms. Yang?
Thank you. So we are here to serve all students. In this budget and accelerator, what I do not see is, is there an item for our gifted and talented students? I do not see it there.
Yes. So there, there is an investment in the core budget because our gifted and talented supervisors are part of the programs that we have currently. There was an addition of an AEI specialist, an accelerated enriched instruction specialist who can help support with the expansion of the middle years program. There's also the addition of middle years program. And though it's for everyone, the gifted students definitely benefit from that approach. So those are just a few of the things that are there specifically for our gifted and talented students.
What I'm looking for is in our effort of strengthening our math, within your AEI, are they math content specialists? That's specifically designated for science and math in terms of gifted and talented education. I'm not talking about middle years because these are restricted to only certain schools. I'm looking at our gifted education have moved to our local schools. I'm talking about our local schools.
So we do have in mind for this instructional specialist, not only to help with middle years, but also our enriched literacy expansion. And currently, that team in AEI works very closely with our math and science specialists in the K-12 curriculum department. And so they work to develop the enriched and accelerated courses and ensure the communication to schools, supports to schools, professional development is done collaboratively. So that's currently the plan that we are proposing for next school year.
And the summer institute also has gifted education as one of the topics that will be covered.
What, what does that entail? What does that look like? Paint a picture for me. What does that look like?
The gifted education summer institute?
Yeah.
So there are a variety of ways of meeting the needs of our gifted and talented students, right? Once a student is identified as gifted and talented in whatever area or areas that student has, it's about how do we use the resources that we have to meet the needs of the students in the various settings that they're in. So there's different models of what this looks like, but using some of the resources that we have here, junior grade books, using some of the William &amp; Mary units and helping teachers have access to that so that they're trained in how to implement those units and how to implement what happens in the enriched literacy curriculum. The team, yesterday, I think it was, we were talking about in advanced math and literacy, what do we have? What are our practices? What are we promoting? What's available to students, looking at the data? So you're, in the institute, in the training, it would still be very basic information for, for all teachers who have gifted and talented students in the classes. So it's not that intense rollout of a new curriculum or a new program.
I appreciate you provided two example of literacy for our elementary school students. What I still do not hear is our middle, our secondary math and science. And are we just doing busy work? They finish early, let's give them a, a few more activities to do? Or are we intentional with support from the central office to provide differentiation for those students? So I'm still waiting to hear.
Well, I just want to remind us that for secondary, particularly as soon as students get into middle school, that is when we have a significant number of accelerated courses. So students leave elementary school and can continue on a grade-level pathway that will get them to algebra by grade eight, or an accelerated pathway that can get them to algebra by grade seven or eight. So we have really worked very hard in our math office to make pathways available for students so that our goal for math, K to high school, is for students to be successful in algebra by grade seven, eight, or nine. So we have been working very carefully to make sure that our students are ready and that when they get to middle school, they have multiple pathways to do so. So many of our courses are above-grade level courses at the middle school level by design. And we also talk about in our training how to differentiate within those courses. So that is always happening. And then at the, for science, we talked about in our special populations committee that we are building in the enrichment opportunities for our students. We started with grade six, we're working on seven and eight at this time. And so those continue to be built out. In training, we will continue to work with our staff to make sure they can differentiate. Planning is a key piece to the success of any quality instruction. So we want to make sure that they're planning and thinking about students who need enrichment or acceleration in those courses.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm asked that we can move on to the next presentation, and then we can kind of hear the big picture and save any remaining questions that you may have about these topics till then. Dr. McKnight?
Hello, I'll turn it over to you at this time.
Wonderful, thank you. And I will ask Mr. Riley, Ms. Edwards, and Dr. Marks to come to the table, and if we could pull the PowerPoint back up. All right, so obviously, we had a pretty lengthy discussion around our human resources and a lot of the initiatives that they laid out just a couple of days ago, but we're here today to talk specifically around the accelerators. And so we're looking, as this slide would show here, at improved retention and recruitment, so we're focusing on both, the recruitment of staff, but also the retention of the wonderful staff we already have, as well as safe and inclusive school climate, which we believe will, you know, lead to the outcome of better student, better outcomes for our students, which is, you know, why we're all here. So if we could go to the next slide, I will turn it over to Dr. Marks.
Hello again. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you today about accelerators that we've already included in the budget, but additional accelerators that will support what we are doing. So in terms of the original accelerators, I just want to call out that these accelerators are to provide support and increase OHRD's, the Office of Human Resources and Development capacity, to help us with a number of different functions. One is 2.0 FTEs of background screening specialists, so we keep up with making sure we're on top of our screening. And also, we talked the other day about A&amp;S Coordinator, the idea that we do need to do more targeted recruitment. Currently, Mr. McCoy manages all our hiring and process and does do recruiting, but with the additional 1.0 A&amp;S Coordinator, we really will be able to talk about some of the, to, some of the things we talked about the other day, to really be able to target, particularly do more external recruitment as well. Our classification specialist is, you know, we have over 400 positions for SEIU. We have many different positions in terms of our administrators as well, and we need to keep up with those classifications. And also, there is a lot of change in responsibilities over the years of many of our positions. So right now, in OHRD, we have 1.0, and we are asking for another 1.0 classification specialist. So these are really important in terms of our capacity to support our new and current employees. Next slide, please.
Did you say what, A&amp;S? You may, I may have missed.
Administrative and supervisory staff.
This person focuses on those.
Right. Would work with Mr. McCoy around our principal hiring, principal selection, our central office, hiring, all positions actually that are classified N and above. The board, you help us in terms of the support for our positions that are O levels and above.
Thank you. I just want to make sure everybody understands what A&amp;S is. Thank you.
Okay. So in terms of thinking how we can support our new and current staff, one of the things we, Dr. Stanislav talked about the other day was the importance of that, supporting new teachers. And in fact, I just wanted to comment on the summer training. We have not only new educator orientation 1.0, but we have 2.0 and 3.0. We just don't do it at the beginning of the year. We follow our new teachers throughout the year, and so we certainly will collaborate with curriculum and instruction to make sure that our content is aligned as well, to really support our new teachers. And we know from research, the idea that you just don't do everything at the beginning of the year, that you really have to support them throughout the year, because as with everyone, new teachers go into highs and lows, and we want to support them. So we were thinking about our consulting teachers, which are a great program, probably very few districts across the nation have that one-on-one support for our new teachers and our underperforming teachers as well. It is a collaboration between MCEA and a longstanding collaboration that really has supported many, many teachers over the year. But you know what? We don't have consulting counselors. And consulting counselors are, would be very important. We hired 66 new counselors last year, and they really had the, supported their principal's support of others, but really not that one-on-one support. And so we are requesting three consulting counselors to support our new counselors, and thus, you know, really impacting student well-being. And also, our consulting teachers have a very high caseload. Right now, it's about 25 to one consulting teacher. That is a lot, and two more consulting teachers that we can focus maybe in our hard-to-staff areas, or, you know, math teachers, science teachers. You know, we will look at the needs and who we hire will really help lower that ratio. We also have the need to have another instructional specialist for a skillful teacher. And a skillful teacher and the observation and analysis of teaching are really very important. Observation and analysis of teaching is for our resource teachers and supervisors, as they are observing teachers, it's aligned to our professional growth system and our standards. Right now, we do have a, over 100 teachers on a waiting list to take that. And if, and one of the things that you have to take to be a resource, to do the resource teacher work, is to, observation and analysis of teaching. And this, again, is a collaboration between our teachers and our administrators to support teachers. So the more resource teachers we can get trained, as well as all our APs and ASAs, the better off it is, and that would be a great support. All this would really connect to that, the retention. And one thing I didn't say the other day is, every effective teacher we retain is one less teacher we have to hire, so it's really important. Also, to support our Supporting Services staff, we talked about the FAST program, which is grant-funded, so a professional growth consultant would help to move some of this support over to our operating budget, to provide that professional development to our Supporting Services staff. And the last three positions are two coordinators and one staffing specialist. One of those coordinators is a coordinator in the Department of Human Capital Management. It's a coordinator who staffs teachers. The other staffing specialist staffs support staff. And we talked the other day about the importance of streamlining and getting our staff hired quickly, and two additional positions in Human Capital Management will help us to hire people more quickly and also provide services to our schools. So our current staff, they are assigned to schools, and it would lessen their ratio of the schools that they support, because one of the things we want, it's almost like a human resources business partner, we want our staffers to really work closely with our principals, know their schools, and know the staffing needs for the schools. And then that second coordinator is a coordinator for compliance and investigation, again, to help us complete some of these compliance and investigatory items that we have, but we, the idea that we do have a more ADA accommodations or accommodations for our employees, so that we want to be able to support and then support our employees throughout the year around their accommodations.
Good morning, everyone. Last year, the board placed some significant funding into the Department of Safety and Security that had been different in the previous years. And it was placed mainly into staffing, and just to go back to a few things that the board added in, we increased the number of cluster security coordinators from six to nine last year. That gave the ability for those cluster security coordinators to really be able to support the schools in a different fashion and provide really personalized service. They've completed about 2,300 visits to our schools this year, to be able to be in those spaces at the elementary, middle, and high school level. In addition to that, we added in 12 rover positions, security rovers, and they were in the thought process of really looking at how we have support in our elementary schools. Those rovers are assigned to a cluster, they visit their elementary schools, they participate in community activities, attend parent meetings, and really build the relationships with students. And throughout this year, they've completed about 1,900 visits. And actually, being at those schools, and they try to do a cycle of visiting each elementary school that they have approximately once every two weeks, so that they're there, they're building the relationships, and they're a part of the school community. In addition, the board provided about $250,000 for the implementation of cameras at the elementary level. And that was a supreme focus to really look at, how do we support those safety and security needs at the elementary level? And in our conversations this year, we've talked about just the cameras being moved into our elementary schools through a phased-in process, so that pretty much by the end of this year, going into the summer, our schools who don't have any cameras will have a full outfit. And then going into the next school year, all of our schools, in terms of our elementary schools, will have the level of equity that they need, where we have some with one or two cameras, but now we want to give them the full complement that they need in order to be able to see throughout the schools. The current staffing allocations for our security assistants, for our security assistants are determined on a few key areas. Student enrollment, we consider square footage as well as portables, and then the consideration of programming as well as serious incidents. And we take a look at the staffing in terms of really thinking about that process in consultation with OHRD, schools, security, and really trying to come up with, what is the addition that we make to the different schools? And while there have been increases with our security allocations over the years, mainly at the high school level, we recognize that we have to review it from a holistic perspective. So one of the critical things that we want to do this year, the accelerator that comes forward, is for 10 additional security positions. However, we want to make sure how we think about the addition of allocations at our school is a bit more holistic and matched with right now. So we are gathering input, and we'll be gathering input from our principals, our security staff, as well as working with the school ILTs, to really think about what is the criteria, kind of the thematic components that we need to consider when thinking about adding in. Just a little bit of data for you. We have about 213 security assistants within the school system, 84 at the middle school level and 129 at the high school level. In the last four years, we've only added four positions. And so as we think about our enrollment, we think about some of the things that I discussed with you around criteria, we want to make sure that it is aligned for where we are right now, and really being considerate about what the addition will be and how it is provided to our schools that would need that. So with the 10 additional security positions, we really want to really think about that standard that we create and be thoughtful around if this accelerator is provided, to really take into account what the need is, as well as the readiness of the schools, and really, bless you, and really understanding the need of the school, which is why that fee, I'm sorry, something is in my eye. What the need of the school is at that particular, I'm not winking at you for my accelerator for that particular level. I'm so sorry. The addition of the 10 would really provide us an opportunity to address a couple of key factors that are critically important. Our enrollment has grown over the years, and our square footage has also grown. In five years, we have had just under, thank you so much, five years, we had just under 25 million square feet, and we currently have 25 million square feet within our schools, and we have about 26.5 million at this point in time. And so we want to be mindful of that. Next school year, with renovations, new schools, we will be at about 27.5 million square footage. And so we want to take that into mind in terms of how students move through a building, the needs of the school, where things are located, the traffic flow, that we bear that component in mind. The portables are also a consideration, and as we think about portables, we have 545, probably close to 560 next year. And in thinking about the portables, not that that is a key factor, but we also have to think about not only the supervision, but then also, as we put those portables in, is a camera needed in order to think about the external outlook within those locations? So it's not always about an individual or a security assistant, but as we're adding these fixtures to the building, we want to be mindful of the location, the needs, and working with the school and hearing from them, and being proactive from the very beginning. The second component, in terms of this accelerator, really focuses on the overall well-being and safety in the building, and the consideration with the serious incident data. And the serious incident data, again, is one component, but having an additional person within the building and really thinking about, from last year, in our middle schools, we had about 1,100 serious incidents, and we're sitting at approximately 600 at this point. In our high schools last year, we had approximately 1,200, and we're at about maybe 693 now. And so as we work together, you know, we're being proactive, but really thinking about that, and as we learn what the key factors are in terms of considerations. And I know the last time I was at the board, the board articulated just the thought around using that as a possible data point to consider the allocation. The third part I raise is just really having staff in that building who are trained in certain areas with safety and security, and to really think about the continuous needs on a daily basis. The other part I want to bring is that a security assistant is just not there to secure the facility. One of the key factors we look for in the employees that take these jobs are their relationship building that they can do with students, staff, and families. This creates another trusted adult, so we're looking at being proactive. But we also take into consideration what is and what is not needed, and really doing that work around school operations. So I want to bring that to the board for consideration. So the 10 positions would give us an opportunity to be really thoughtful around the needs that we're seeing right now, also give us a chance to really be collaborative and think about what is the criteria that we want to use, especially because we've only added four within the last couple of years. So now is the time to really kind of almost level-set again, think about the current status, and really reinvent the way in which we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Unflappable. If you need to, if you need to excuse yourself, please do so, and we'll turn it over to Ms. Avastri.
Thank you. Let's stick with the one question, and then we'll keep going around. I'm going to start on my right with Ms. Yang, if you have a question.
Yes, thank you, everyone, for the presentation. I have a clarifying question. So we talk about base budget, recommended budget, adjusted budget. Very helpful to learn all those terms. So here, this slide, Slide 5, shows, the blue part is the recommended budget. So in your adjusted proposal, does this blue part sound... So in your adjusted proposal, does this blue part salary benefit and healthcare, has that changed or it has not changed?
No, discussions today were strictly around accelerators. So although we have more FTEs, there will be more salaries associated with that, right? But, but we've strictly looked at accelerators, the green portion today, in that, in that round circle there.
Okay, so today is focused on the green portion.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And again, remembering that it was cost neutral as well.
Well, thank you for that. I, I'll start with my second question, actually, which is, I and my colleagues have been hearing a lot from, from the community and the staff of schools about the fact that young people and the kids are not going to bathrooms, including my own nieces. And I want to see where in here with the public safety, where, where are we putting any extra efforts to make sure, I mean, we have taken the doors out, we have done, you know, but where are we investing in either home monitors, safety, whatever you call them? Because that's, that's a real issue that, that our kids and young people are having across, across the county. And then my second question on the adjusted proposal, I'm sorry if I missed something. So your acceleration is for 2 million, right? No, no, sorry, 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 no. Accelerator is four positions for 2 million in page 25. So four positions will cost 2 million? Okay, thank you. I want one of those positions. I'm just kidding.
What's also in there is some money for employee compensation around some things that we're still negotiating around incentives, things like that.
Got you, got you. Okay, I just wanted to be clear for the public, too.
Thank you.
Yep, so thank you for that, Dr. Marks. As far as the bathrooms go, you know, we're looking at that as an immediate issue that we're addressing right now this year and then also what we're going to do moving forward. And so Ms. Edwards talked a lot about their, some of the things that we're doing long-term for next school year, including adding 10 additional positions and then reevaluating how they're deployed and what they're doing in the schools. Dr. Murphy, myself, along with Ms. Edwards and the security team are also looking at what needs to be done immediately. We know we've got a problem right now, and so what we have done in the short term, as far as staffing goes, is deploy additional security assistants out to the high schools now, along with a permanent substitute for every high school, an additional permanent substitute for every high school for the remainder of this school year. And then we will evaluate the effectiveness of that and see if that is something that is needed going forward. And so those are the staffing pieces, but equally as important, if not more, is the procedures that our people are following. And security, as we know, is not just the responsibility of the 200 and some security personnel, it's the responsibility of every adult in this district and every single school. And so we are doing a listening tour now, hearing from our students, hearing from our staff, hearing from our leaders as far as what is needed. And a communication was sent out, an initial communication was sent out last week, highlighting some of the areas that we were going to focus on. And so now we're working with the team to pull together a more comprehensive plan that will address the bathroom doors, along with hallway sweeps and a number of other procedural changes that we're making this year to go along with the additional staff that we're adding that will address the issue.
Glad to hear you have short-term, immediate strategies as long as long-term strategies for the next year. Ms. Wolf?
I just want to talk about the security assistance. Had a meeting with several of our teachers from some of our special needs schools and alternative programs, and I just want to be sure that when you're considering placement, that they're adequately considered because they're dealing with some behaviors. And I want them to feel safe and secure, and I'm not sure from the conversation that that's how they're feeling because, you know, some of the kids are really big and they've been attacked. So just so that you take into consideration not only serious incidents, because I'm not sure that they're going to report certain things as serious incidents because of the kind of school they're at. But look at the programming and talk to them to be sure that they shouldn't be, you know, getting somebody new too. Thank you.
Ms. Wolf, I want to thank you for raising that because programming currently is a thought, and that's why we definitely want to gather the input from our principals, our security staff, but also have the discussion within our leadership teams where they are represented, representatives of staff within the building. We recognize some of our programs, when we talk about some of our discrete programs, we have students who elope. So it's a combo of not only an actual security assistant, but as we've been going out to schools through our strategic operation support, some of the conversations we've been having are even around the fencing. Because it may have been a school that didn't have a program, now they have a program, but as we're thinking about new programs going into buildings, we have to look at all aspects of the layout of the campus so that we're not behind in coming back. So I appreciate you raising that as, as a criteria for consideration.
Mrs. Evans? Mrs. Madraski?
Yep. So for the HR, human resources part, I'm curious, you know, you were talking about some of these, you know, the consulting teachers, consulting counselors, very supportive of. I don't know what some of these other things really specifically are and whether or not it's something that we already have, and if we do already have some of these positions and their additions, how effective do we feel that the current people are? And I'd like to really understand what the difference is between some of these positions and what our directors do, because you spoke a lot about ongoing support for our principals, and isn't that what our directors do? And would we?
You're talking about Slide 25?
Yeah. So these-
25 and 26, both frankly.
Well, let me talk about the, for example, the staffing specialists and the staffing coordinators. These are, these positions are about HR functions. This, and so it is in addition to what we have. So we have, in our Department of Human Capital Management, we have people who directly staff teacher positions and directly staff supporting service positions. And I believe we have five currently that staff supporting service positions and seven that staff teacher positions.
What does that mean?
Two more would allow us, one for each, to be able to staff people more quickly. They also, they also do support recruitment as well in terms of our local recruitment fairs. And it also will be able to have us provide more support to our schools in terms of staffing teachers and to our schools in terms of staffing support staff, but also to our offices, to staff support staff. And we will be able to, one of the issues we have is that our hiring process does take longer than it should, and sometimes we lose candidates because, you know, we're sending them out to our hiring managers, they're making decisions, and we can act more quickly about it. These really, two positions are really tied to that recruitment and hiring piece that we talked about last night, more of the hiring piece after the recruitment team hands over the pool, pool of candidates. The professional growth consultant is an SEIU position, similar to a consulting teacher. They support underperforming SEIU members, but we are expanding out their role to really help with professional learning and really to align the professional learning of our support staff to teachers and to administrators. And they will be able to, this additional position, we only have four of them right now, so this additional position would be able to intersect with Mrs. Boudreau and career pathways and some of the other kinds of things, and also to be able to support, support staff within their first year. We know that support within your first three years of employees really helps with retention because it connects them to the organization. And the last coordinator was in our Department of Compliance and Investigations, and it really is about the numbers of people that we have who need accommodations and also the other part of what HR does is also employee investigations.
Okay, I guess, again, I just, I'm wondering, in an effort to see us put as much money into our schools as possible, if hiring two more directors as opposed to two more coordinators so that they could focus more on the staffing issues and everything directly in the schools, would that alleviate the current coordinators to be able to be, able to be more effective with the hiring process?
Well-
Also incorporating the new equipment that we're supposed to be getting to make our hiring so much easier, right?
And, and you're speaking about directors for school support and well-being, supporting principals?
Yes, and their schools, I assume.
You know, and certainly, as a former community superintendent, I support all the support that principals need, but these, these people really are, are functional people that will help us provide better services to our schools so we can quickly hire people and onboard them. I think it's, they work in tandem. One is the support for the professional learning of principals and what, what they do. This is really about human capital functions of hiring and selection.
And I'll add to that, too. When we sat down and looked at what the need was in HR as far as, you know, looking to next school year and how are we going to have our schools as well-staffed as humanly possible, there was really three parts to that. The recruitment part, the retention part, and the, the speed in which we're able to move people through the process. And so Slide 25 hits on a lot of the recruitment pieces. And as Dr. Marks noted, the one bullet there, employee compensation, has several things in there that are currently being negotiated, so we're not going to speak specifically to those now, but several things that we believe will really help with recruitment. And then we look at retention. And so the consulting counselors, the consulting teachers, the PGS support, that's all going to help with the retention of our staff, along with, you know, whatever pay increases we're able to do this year. The third part, and I know that you all have heard about this, how long it takes to get people through the process is also critical because we do lose people. And once someone submits their application into our system, that's just the beginning of getting them into the classroom. And so some of the positions that Dr. Marks was highlighting here address that need as far as actually shepherding these people from the application process through all of the different processes that we have to get them ready to go and into the classroom.
And if I may, talk about the specialist for the skillful teacher. With, we have two courses, skillful teacher, observation and analysis of teaching, observation and analysis of teaching, to teach people who are doing observations and evaluations how to do it, but it's based on what's a good teaching, what's a good teacher, what's good teaching? And our skillful teacher classes now, we really refer some of our, our teachers who are, you know, developing and, and, you know, really need that, but we also want to be able to open it up to other teachers who want to really develop, help to develop their skills and, and really focus on the science of what good teaching is about. And over the years, we lost positions in the skillful teacher area, so 1.0 would really help us with that backlog and, and also support principals because if you train your resource teachers in your high schools and your team leaders in your middle schools to support that, and all our consulting teachers have to take observation and analysis of teaching too, it really helps the principal in terms of the principal work.
Mr. Kim?
Thank you. Yeah, I was also curious about those 10 security assistant positions. And kind of the initial question I wanted to ask was, was like how, how that number came to be, how, you know, the reason why it was 10? From the conversation, it really sounds like that's kind of a smaller group to kind of evaluate for future need. So now I kind of want to ask, you know, should this be a model that bears fruit and is successful in, in addressing some of those concerns? Like, what is that process going to look like to evaluate the future need to, to expand and grow security assistance? I ask because it is, of course, important to ensure that, that there's enough resources and people to help with security across the board at all of our schools. And, and of course, 10 people can't address those needs at 210, 211 schools, so just wanted to ask.
Thank you, Mr. Kim, for that question. The 10 is kind of, I would say, a pulse point from some of the, the requests that have come through over the last several years, and I'll do pre-COVID, not bearing in square footage, some of the needs that we've heard from the different locations. In addition, thinking about other factors and other things that we've done in order to support schools that isn't just about a person. And so that's where the 10 came from because we may get maybe anywhere between five to 10 requests as we're seeing things that are happening this year, requests for even additional substitutes and/or the number of security at each school, trying to see how that actually looks and what the support is. So that's why that feedback from the, the school is going to be very critical and the work with the Office of School Support and Well-being to really be able to try to figure out where is the best location for the 10. We also provide additional assistance if we need to on a daily basis. In terms of being able to see if it actually worked, because that's what we want to know, if a school increases from two to three or from six to seven, how did they use it? What were the data pieces as we think about really the consideration of providing an additional assistant? What are the data pieces that we want to norm ourselves to be able to see if it had a change with the things that even bubbled up for the school to even be considered? So I think we're in a good space at this point as we really think about what would be the criteria, then what would be the evaluation method as well. One thing that will be important is that quarterly, we will need to check. So as the quarter changes, that's always a good mark because that's when that end-of-quarter data is coming in to be able to not only look at school level, but triangulate it with the visits of the cluster security coordinators, the rovers, the anecdotal data, and then to see if, as we go into next year, should there be an increase in the ask and/or did we get it right, you know, more or less, and the support that we need to provide.
Ms. Harris?
Thank you. A couple quick comments first, just following up on some of the comments of my colleagues. First, just following up Ms. Wolf's conversation around our special schools and RICA, I, I just wanted to highlight, we all received a very thoughtful and constructive email today from Ms. Douglas, who is a teacher at RICA, that really kind of reminded us that the work in our regional centers for adolescents and is, children and adolescents is very human resource intensive and being really mindful of how we, we staff those. And then also, I really appreciated Mr. Hall, as we're looking at some of the challenges in our schools, that we're looking at, you know, security as a potential remedy for, and really what we all know is, is a lot of what we're, that, those things that we're trying to remedy with the security fix are getting to, again, you know, people are still processing their trauma, so they're acting out in our buildings in ways that impact our operations. But bringing students into that conversation in a really intentional and substantive way to solve those problems, I think, is, is absolutely critical, and I think we'll be surprised at what we can learn from them. So I'm glad that we're doing that, and I, again, I appreciate Mr. Hall raising that again. And I think, I look at all this and I see such thoughtful planning, and, but I also in the back of my mind is this is really so aspirational because we're still in a hiring climate where demand so far exceeds supply, and how we can strategically fill these positions is, is going to be, it, it's kind of the big unknown. it's kind of the big unknown. And I always cringe a little bit when we talk about, I think, you know, you know, more consulting teachers. That's a great idea, but I always cringe when I think about bringing more of our really highly effective teachers out of the classroom. We talk about how we have so many national board-certified teachers that don't teach anymore. I think three or two or three of our last, we just saw the nominees today, a highly talented three teachers nominated for our MCPS Teacher of the Year. And I think two of the winners of the past two years aren't in the classroom anymore, so. That's that. I think this question gets to follow up a little bit on Ms. Vandrowski, looking at the two new coordinators and one staffing consultant. So all of the work that we're doing, I think, is going to be, is not going to be as effective and impactful as it can be if we can't regularize operations in schools and make sure that teachers have their planning time, teachers aren't being called to cover because we can't get substitutes. And so, will those positions be in part looking at patterns of staffing in schools that are chronically pulling teachers away from their regular duty day? And try to fix that with, and I know you've mentioned, you know, a dedicated, long-term sub for each high school, but these kinds of staffing challenges we hear at all levels and from schools all across the county. So just wondering how these new HR positions are going to help us get around and on top of that.
So in terms of the staffing positions, especially the coordinator for our teacher-levels staffing, it will allow us to be able to pre-qualify more people, look at our subs. Actually, our substitute pool is one of our pipelines for hiring teachers as well. We also look at data every day around where our highest, where we have the highest unfilled sub positions. And we really try to focus in on those schools. We also know where we still have vacancies that are filled by long-term sub. And so, the coordinator, staffing coordinator, will be able to work on hiring more people. So hopefully, we can get a permanent person rather than just using a sub. We send that data around our sub-fill rate. We send it to, actually, our union presidents. I send it to them as, as well, so they know what's happening in the schools as well as staff from the Office of School Support and Well-being because we're all interested in what's happening in terms of those sub-fill rates. I do want to say something about, you know, taking our best teachers from the schools for some of these other positions. You know, I think that Dr. McKnight is bringing opportunity culture, a pilot on opportunity culture that is looking at, you know, can we look at part-time in the, in the classroom and part-time supporting our, our teachers and coaching our teachers? Those kinds of things are really very effective. And, you know, so we do need to look at always protecting our schools and, you know, having incentives and ways to keep people in, in the classroom, but also to use their talents to support our teachers as well.
Thank you. And Ms. Harris, the board, you have highlighted the the need to improve our systems, and that's what the community told us needed to happen. And that's what the superintendent has addressed here today with, we tell them the what we're hearing and they figure out the how. So this is our attempt to address these very important concerns that you are bringing forward. I'm going to go around one more time, see if anyone has any remaining questions. Please turn your light on if you do. Ms. Revita Evans?
Thank you. So I'm all for, in fact, I think you could probably use another, an additional person in HR to get some folks who are applying and go through the vetting. I just spoke to two folks that I had recruited, both bilingual. One has a master's degree, male, master's degree, bachelor's degree, wants to become a teacher. The other one has a bachelor's degree. And they want to, they want to give back, they want, and so they've been kind of in the, for a long, long time, and they're getting discouraged. And I've been saying, please, just hang in there, hang in there. So, so it's critical because there is a shortage and we're losing them to Fairfax in DC and even our backyard on Arundel, Prince George's County, right? So I, and these are bilingual folks that we really want. So I would suggest that we could have used one more person. But the, the question that I have, and this is maybe for Dr. McKnight is, I know back in December you came to us and for the retention and recruitment, there was $111 million that you said was allocated to that. So is this an increase? Are we going to see an increase on that or we're to, to, to that?
Me, for all staff?
Yeah.
Yes, so we are definitely looking internally. I know we were, at one point before our budget, waiting for our governor's budget to be released, to see what opportunity is there. So we're looking at a number of options right now, yes.
That's great. And that, does that include also like an increase in pay rate for?
Yes, that's exactly.
Okay, I'm happy.
Thank you. Any remaining questions? Ms. Madraski?
So, along those lines, I was hoping that there was a retention bonus aspect being looked at and whatever. But I do have a question on about page five. So the salary, I know we're not talking specifically about the blue section now, but since it's the budget work session, I'm going to ask you anyways. You know, I was curious as to, well, first of all, what is the, what is an annual cost of COLAs? And increases, you know, steps, I'm sorry. And does this number incorporate the money for some of the, of that for this year? Or is it only just the monies for next year? And then, I know it's just an earmarked number, but along with that is, as we are hiring more positions, hopefully, fingers crossed that this comes to fruition and isn't just hopeful thinking, how is that being incorporated into the number that we've currently earmarked? And what effects will that have?
Yeah, so a couple of things. So first of all, as Dr. McKnight mentioned, last year at this time, we had a good idea of what our state funding would be. This year, due to certain circumstances, there's a couple of pots of money in our state funding that is questionable, you know, how much we're going to get. So we, by two weeks from now, will be in front of you with the superintendent's amended recommended budget, at which time we'll have discussion, you guys will vote, and then we'll have the, the board's recommended budget that'll go to the county, right? So to, but for your question on the placeholder there, so that, that is a placeholder. And depending on the state funding, you know, there might be area there where, you know, that could be moved. Right today, we didn't talk about that because we strictly focus on accelerators and kept it cost-neutral. Obviously, if we have an increase in state funding, there'll be more discussion on that to determine how that would be spent.
But just
Oh, just, so a step is about 21 and a half million. I mean, a step is about 40 million. A COLA or GWA, we call it here, is 21 and a half million.
Okay. And then, so does this number include any monies for this year or is this all just for next year?
This is proposed for next year.
And 40 million, you said, for step?
And to cover the current, current salaries as well, too, plus the, plus any increases.
Right.
So that, that's
Okay. I know that it wasn't considered as part of an accelerator, but can someone just kind of refresh my understanding of the additional supports for special education? I know we talked about it and I asked about it at one of the previous budget work sessions, but I'm concerned about actually making sure that we've got supports that are really going to have a strong effect on the overload of work that our special education teachers and support staff are expected to do because we can't hire enough people anyways. And if we don't make that job look a little bit more attractive, I'm afraid of what's going to happen with it.
Your question is, what is in the base budget to support special education?
Since there, I didn't see anything in accelerators.
Is there someone that could answer that question?
I'm calling Diana, who is the expert in what is in the budget to come down, if she's in the building. But currently, your position about that, first of all, people are overwhelmed because there are not enough. I think the budget has included expand, expanding supports, additional people. I don't know if you can look at the chapter for me, it's chapter four when it was presented. The other piece is that some of the requests have been to reduce the amounts of paperwork. So looking at what ways we can do that, knowing at the same time when we're, some of the paperwork that we've asked staff to do is to actually help analyze their use of time and what they're spending time on to be able to reduce it. So it's twofold. It's more people to be able to assist. It's also streamlining what the job is. It's also making it attractive as a, as a priority place to come. We worked really early in the year to be able to incentivize people who have dual certification. They have a special education certification and, and an additional one to come to our priority program areas. So those are the types of things that are included in the, the base budget.
Mr. Hall, I think you probably were going to say exactly.
Yep, okay, I was just going to say, so if you remember, if we think back through the budget process, we start with our FY23 budget, and then we look at inflationary costs, and then we look at the same service budget. And that includes new positions for anticipated growth in special education. So it's not considered an accelerator, but there are, and I don't have the numbers right in front of me now, but there are more special ed positions in the proposed budget than there are in the current budget to address that projected growth.
And one of the things that I'll also add, thank you, Mr. Hall, is that we've set aside money and worked with our associations through how do we continue to look at incentivizing these areas? Because although we've increased the positions, we also want to make sure that we're addressing the things that make the workload and the position attractive.
So that's really what I'm talking about because increasing the number of positions is great, except for the fact that we're already short-staffed in that department, so, in that area. So if we can't hire what we have currently budgeted for, unless we can utilize some of the funds, maybe instead of positions, to actually figure out ways to eliminate some of the additional burdens, then maybe more people would come.
Right, so that, that's why I said some of that is in the space of negotiation in terms of how we get creative with incentivizing in special needs areas like the, like special education. So, I mean, that's one way we work. We don't want to do those things in isolation because I think that it's important for us to take into consideration the voices of the teachers and others who are in those positions to help us come to agreement around what the right factors will be.
Okay, okay.
Ms., Mr. Kim?
Thank you. So I first wanted to ask a little bit more about the, the proposed three consulting counselors and a little bit more about what that works, what that work looks like, really what it means to provide that one-on-one to support to counselors.
Sure. So we have consulting teachers who are outstanding teachers who work with new teachers, novice teachers, new to MCPS and underperforming teachers. They provide one-on-one support around instruction. And we hire them based on content area. They go through a very rigorous hiring process. It's in collaboration with MCEA. We have a, a teacher PAR panel. And this panel is really been in our, our district for a long time and really works to support teachers. So the, so if I'm a new math teacher, secondary math teacher, high school math teacher, I get paired with a secondary math consulting teacher. And I work with that teacher. I help them understand the instruction, the curriculum. I give them a lot of face time and, and that. And then also, we have teachers who might be underperforming, and we give them very intensive help. We have never had consulting counselors. And knowing how important it is to provide support for any new educator, the research shows if you have a high-quality induction and mentoring program, it really impacts retention. And with our focus on student well-being, it really makes sense to provide support for counselors. How do you implement your counseling program on, on the elementary level, middle school, high school? We would hire outstanding counselors who can support counselors. And again, we may look at that in a unique way, maybe not one-on-one, maybe half-time, half-time at school. We'll, we'll work to look at what's the best for, for the consulting counselor as well as for the needs of our schools to really give that intense support, that one-on-one support about how you implement your program, how you interact and work with all the people on the student well-being team. And it really will go a long way, first of all, to support their development because new teachers are not necessarily fully formed. They develop within their first three years and also help with retention.
Okay, thank you. And then I, I just wanted to raise one concern, and it's certainly closely related around, you know, those 504 support pieces and the accelerator that exists within the proposed operating budget. And what I'm still kind of struggling with, you know, I, I, I know for a fact, I read it somewhere in here. If you asked me to flip through, I couldn't find it. But I know for a fact I read somewhere in there that a lot of the intentionality around that, that accelerator is to support counselors with the, certainly burden some workload around 504 administration. But based on our conversations at the table, it really sounds like a lot of those efforts are going towards professional development and compliance, which are certainly important pieces. But I'm still struggling, and I think maybe what's missing is that very direct support, that very explicit people we onboard to administer 504 plans to alleviate the workload of counselors. And now we have this robust student well-being teams in all of our schools, so it's certainly a more robust network of support for students. But at the same time, based on our conversation two days ago, counselors still have this really important role of being an access point for students. And my concern is that, you know, because of the workload they have with all this work, including 504 support, you know, it's a difficult, it's a difficult access point. So now, more than ever, I think, is it critical that students are able to, to have that face time with their counselors? And I think investment in supporting counselors around 504 administration would go a long way in this area. Thank you.
Ms. Harris?
Yeah, I just, I first want to thank Mr. Kim for really just pulling together sort of a whole raft of concerns we have around both students saying they, they can't access their counselors, counselors talking about how, how just overburdened they are, and then MCPS making those counselors important touch points for, for connecting students to other things. And so, just getting more directly to Mr. Kim's question, we have talked for well over a year about how can we provide additional administrative support, hopefully, multilingual administrative support for our counseling teams so that really and truly they're not spending a minute of their time doing any kind of an administrative task that doesn't require their expertise and licensure? And so, is there, you know, as we're looking at these staffing allocations and, you know, the budget items, you know, 90% of the budget's people, 80% of the budget, it's in the schools with people, you know, helping support students. What are we looking at in a more, so we've got the 504 supports, but I think the, the administrative burden on, on our wellness staff extends beyond just 504. So is there any relief in here for our, our counseling teams so that they really can not spend a minute of their time doing work that's not, you know, student-supporting and requiring of their professional licensure and training?
Is there someone that could address that?
I think there's several factors that are going on, and I appreciate Mr. Kim. I think we've seen an acceleration, not only in our district, but in other districts with the number of 504s and how those services. So traditionally, that may have been a model for those to be delivered or serviced through counselors. But there has been a tremendous increase in the request for those. But there has been a tremendous increase in the request for those, so we are trying to balance that out. I also think, you know, it's setting priorities, and I agree with Ms. Harris in her saying, you know, we need to make sure that counselors' time is utilized in serving kids and having that face-to-face contact. But I think we're in an environment where we're seeing a lot of those service demands, accelerating those and trying to find a balancing point. And I think that's something that the staff is aware of, and I think that's something that we're continuing to work through. I think the relief or the steps we've taken with the 504 is a good step in that direction, but I think it's going to have to be something we're going to continue to have to evaluate as we move forward.
Just to clarify, that's what I was referring to as well, like an administrative type of support for, for them and for special education.
And I'll just add too, if my memory serves correct, I believe there was about $931,000 in the first round of accelerators that included a system-wide coordinator and then funding for temporary part-time clerical support in that area.
Okay.
And that's actually not from memory, my team over there is.
Oh, I was just going to say. I had thought that that was central office support as well, so that's why it wasn't clear that they will be in the schools actually doing paperwork and stuff like that.
I think it's important to highlight with all of our discussion today, this is, these are direct services to schools. So, you know, I know out in your conversations with the community, you know, there may be the conversation, well, they've added this position or that position. Those positions are going to be serving schools directly based on whatever their particular need or their area of expertise is going to be.
Sounds that way, that's good.
To your question, I think you asked about special ed. So due to program needs and enrollment in the current budget, there's 138 positions there. But like we said, the key is to hire them and retain them.
Right, exactly. Well, and yeah, and I was really referring to basically exactly what you all were just now talking about. Mr. Kim explained it, stated it better than I did, I guess. I just have one quick question. It's probably should have been asked on Tuesday, and I apologize, but when you were talking about the security and stuff like that and hiring, disability return, the ability for employees to, so, just put it out there. So we had a security person who was injured on the job, he was on disability, he's, he got better and he wanted to come back to work, and he was told that he had to go off of disability and reapply, which could take a couple of months of, you know, and he was like, I can't go off of disability to wait, like, he wanted to go back to work. And they were, you know, so he ended up taking a job with somebody else because they would hire him, you know, kind of right away. What, what's the situation with that?
I would have to know that particular situation specifically because if he was still our employee, I, I'm not quite sure why he would have to reapply. There are, you know, certain limitations and restrictions when you are on disability. If he had gone to disability and was not considered our employee anymore, I, I don't know. I would, I would certainly have to look at that. But in general, if you are on leave and you're our employee and you're been cleared to come back to work, if you're, if you've been out for a certain period of days, you may not be able to go back to your old job because it may have been vacated, but if you are out, I, within 60, within 60 days, your, your old job is, is held for you. After that, we would place you in a position that you're qualified for, a similar job to what you had. So.
Right away, without having to?
Without, yeah. But again, I don't know the particular of that situation.
It might have been a different, I was just curious, in a regular situation, do people have to wait months?
Not if they're on approved leave and they've been cleared to come, come back. Again, it may not be their exact same position because of how long they may have been out.
Okay.
Okay. If there are no further questions, I do want to follow up on one of Mr. Kim's questions about the 504s again because it has been a reoccurring theme throughout the years for the board. And so his question was, are our investments going to help reduce the burden of 504s to counselors in our schools? And I heard we have money for temporary part-time support. I know that we have done stipends in the past, so counselors at least could get recognized that they, they are doing more. And what am I missing? The coordinators, are the coordinators going to help relieve that or is that a separate support for 504?
Why don't you let us get a full response to you, comprehensive response back to you and sketch all that out?
Thank you. Great.
Well, thank you, everyone. Wonderful conversation. I want to share what my colleagues stated from the very beginning. This is, really appreciate the process to, the process is working. We, you come up with your budget, it is a very early budget, in December, things have changed, right? The Cal report, more information about what the state is doing, new requirements every day. And so we heard from our community. Today, I have seen that you have incorporated the, the voice of the community in this budget. On February 23rd, we will be voting on this budget. And, let's see, and we are here to prepare our students for college, career and community. The board is concerned about math and literacy in particular and fully funding our schools because we know that, as has been stated, we are a people-institution and we're not going to be effective with our math and literacy improvements and preparing our children for college, career and community unless we are, we have a high-quality educator, staff at all levels in front of them and working with them. I do want to address Ms. Harris's concern that all of this works if our children are ready, emotionally ready to learn. And so, not to diminish that, it is a key component of the three-legged stool in terms of teaching and learning, curriculum and social and emotional. Our children have to be ready to learn in order for all of this to work. It's not simple, of course. And finally, just want to emphasize that these investments are going to reach children and educators in schools, in the classroom. Thank you for the budget neutral. It is a big budget. However, this is what it costs to educate children at this time. And schools do more than ever before. People forget that we are, community schools are doing basic services, connecting families to basic services so that they don't have to worry about not having a winter coat or, or other supplies. And then, of course, the great expansion of wellness and mental health, that's all part of our budget. People remember when we were in a, delivering a very different model of education. We are now delivering a much more comprehensive, whole-child, whole-family, whole-community model of education, and that costs more money. So I wanted just to thank you again for this tremendous work. We are all very excited about this budget and really appreciate the process and what we, the work that we have to do ahead for the upcoming year. And hopefully, we can coalesce with our community to advocate for fully funding our budget.
If you have any closing?
I just want to say thank you to the Board of Education, your questions, the things that you've asked us to consider, and we know this is a process that we will continue to work through as long as we are all here and being astute to the needs of our students and our staff and our community. But I want to thank you for giving us an opportunity to work through new data, new understanding of complexities, and being committed to the, to the cause of meeting our students' needs. We can only do this with a board who asks those questions, push us and support us in the way that speaks to what the students' needs are. So I look forward to our community engaging with us further and, and most importantly, seeing these investments being reflective of what they have been sharing over the past weeks and us doing what we need to do for our students. It's a different day now. What it costs to live, to buy food, to enjoy your work in a different environment is different, and we have to acknowledge that in every way possible to retain, to recruit, retain our staff to support our students in the best way. So I want to say thank you for the conversations and the work ahead. Thank you to the staff as well for just working through this. We, they have been diligent, day, night, weekends, just talking through. Yesterday, Mr. Riley's birthday, happy. It was his birthday yesterday, and he was in meetings late, just wanting to make sure we were communicating to our public, you know, and we went through several rounds of what's the right terminology to make sure everyone has an understanding. We know this is a large budget, so it's important for us that everyone understands it. So I just want to thank the staff as well for all that you do to make sure that the work is being fought for so that our board members and our community can see what these investments entail. So I appreciate you.
Thank you, everyone. And with that, we are adjourned.